We, the Bangla people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Ngariña, Wunaguru Bangala Mirinye, Yuradamelbu. Thank you.
Moving on to item six, the minutes of previous meeting, 6.1, the confirmation of the minutes of the previous ordinary council meeting held on Monday, the 28th of April. Take the minutes as read, we have a recommendation. Would somebody care to move? Councillor Simpson moved, Deputy Councillor Pond seconded. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against carried, thank you. 6.2, confirmation of the minutes of the special council meeting held on Monday, the 5th of May, with a recommendation, move Councillor Knox, do I have a second please? Seconded, Councillor Westerman, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against carried, thank you. Item seven, matters adjourned or laid on the table, we have none. Item eight, deputations, we have none. Item nine, petitions, we have none. Item 10, public question time, I'm advised we have no questions. 10.2 is the draft 2025-26 annual business plan and budget, the opportunity with item 10.2.1, verbal submissions from members of the public. Do we have any members of the public that wish to offer a verbal submission on the budget and annual business plan? We thank you for your attendance and thank you. CEO, who's just reminded me quite rightly, Wednesday night, if you haven't been to one of our information sessions before, we've got nothing to say tonight, you're most welcome to join us here for our second and final public information session prior to the budget, that's this Wednesday night here. Item 11, council members' activities, we have them on the screen, I'll give any member an opportunity if there's anything they wish to add. Another very lengthy list of commitments and thank you. No red lights, move on then, thank you. Item 13.1, the draft Audit and Risk Committee minutes, meeting minutes of the 12th of May. We have a recommendation, I will take them as read. Councillor Pond, you're moving for question?
Yes, but I do need to add, can we put an amendment in there that I was actually also present online? That wasn't recorded until it hit confidential and then I was cut off from there.
Thank you, councillor. So were you moving that or that to comment?
Yes, moving and commenting.
Right, seconded, councillor Klobbika?
I have some questions.
Yes, certainly councillor.
I'm a little bit concerned about the minutes, there's a reference to the airport passenger levy, but we don't get to see that as council, so I've got no idea what the Audit and Risk Committee thought about the airport levy charges, and I think it is important that council knows that, given that we have an important decision to make later in this meeting, so can someone enlighten us on that one?
I'll respond initially.
If I can, sorry, through the mayor, the summary of the Audit and Risk Committee's commentary on that particular matter is included in the confidential item on the agenda tonight for council discussion.
The other question that I have is, I've got two actually, more, is that there's a lot of stuff that's made in confidence in the Audit and Risk Committee meeting, as in council meetings, but I would have thought that us, we as council members, would get to see those, and we don't in the current minutes that we have.
Yes, thank you, through the mayor, agree 100%. The minutes that are on the agenda, that come onto the agenda in the council meeting are the public minutes, and those confidential minutes, once they're finalized, will be distributed to all elected members so that you can see them.
Okay, and I just wanted to read a paragraph out from the minutes, because it seems to me that there's some, I don't know, consolation probably not the right word, but some concerns within the Audit Committee in regard to council's finances. It says, "The committee raised its concerns about continuing one-off adjustments and the airport continually being set aside rather than looking at fundamental changes or decisions to improve council's financial position, noting that at some point council would need to make a call on its financial viability, including the airport. It was noted in the absence of a list of actions that can be implemented to rectify the financial position, the budget needs to be accepted in its current form, however going forward the council would need to have a hard discussion around rate increases in order to put it in a sustainable position." Sort of reads to me like a bit of frustration there.
Thank you, through the mayor, the commentary of the Audit and Risk Committee has been coming through into the council and into the administration, with the recommendations of the Audit and Risk Committee being built into the long-term financial plan, and certainly the body of work that is on the agenda today in terms of particularly around the airport considerations and the long-term financial sustainability is part of the confidential agenda tonight, and so we can talk further about the Audit and Risk Committee's feedback in that regard during that item.
Thank you councillor. Any further questions? In that case, we have a mover and a seconder with a recommendation, I'll put that motion, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. Item 13.2, Corporate Services Ordinary Reports, 13.2.1, Budget Review 2024-25 Quarter 3. Before I call for any mover or seconded, does anybody, I will refer to the CEO and appropriate officers, does anybody have a question or comment? In that case, would somebody care to move the recommendation? Councillor Simpson, you're moving?
Correct.
Deputy Mayor Boarder, you're seconding?
Yes.
I have a motion, moved and seconded, I'll put that recommendation, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. Item 13.2.2, the appointment of an external auditor. Take the report as read. Are there any questions of the CEO? Otherwise, we have a recommendation. Moving councillor Knox? Councillor Todd, seconding? I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. 13.2.4, the fraud, corruption, misconduct and maladministration prevention policy. My apologies, sorry, 13.2.3. I crossed out the wrong one. The quarterly report procurement, 1st of January to 31st of March. Do I have any questions of the CEO at this stage? In that case, I'll call for somebody to move the motion. Moved councillor Westerman, seconded councillor Simpson, I'll put that recommendation, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. Now 13.2.4, the fraud, corruption, misconduct and maladministration prevention policy. Again, I'll refer this in the first instance to the CEO, if anybody has any questions, otherwise I will call for a mover. Somebody care to move that recommendation, councillor Westerman? Do I have a second, councillor Inglis? Put the motion, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. Item 14, reports, council offices, 14.1, the office of the Chief Executive, Ordinary Reports, 14.1.1, CEO's Action Report for May 2025. Before I call for a mover, if there are any questions or to the CEO, councillor Knox?
I have a question in regard to the jury duty, is the summons to appear in Adalay or Waiala?
Through the mayor, Port Augusta.
Port Augusta, okay, sorry, that's what I meant to say. Given that we are going to have some staff shortages at upper levels very shortly, would it not be prudent to consider applying for deferment? I'd apply for one when I was CEO in some circumstances, and I just think it would be worthwhile pursuing that.
Appreciate the suggestion councillor. Councillor Pond?
I have a question regarding the rubbish voucher project that's undertaken at the moment. It says there's two streets that are being trialled, just wondering if we can name which streets they are?
I'll take that question on notice.
Thank you, and just wondering if we think that's a big enough test for our data? Just putting it out there.
Thank you for that observation, that is certainly one of the, one of the matters that we'll be looking at in terms of data gathered through that trial as to whether or not that was a sufficient sized trial sample or not, and further information will be brought back to the council next Monday night during the briefing on the city amenity project.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Just in addition to the report that's been provided in the agenda, we have had some discussions at the EPLGA board over the last few months about the potential for Waiala to host the next EPLGA conference, which is due to be held in the early first quarter of 2026. I'm bringing that matter to the council's consideration tonight and seeking a resolution as listed on the board, which is that council supports the hosting of that conference in Waiala. The reason it has been brought forward is that the experience from some of the other smaller councils on the air peninsula, particularly when it comes to accommodation, they're struggling to be able to accommodate large numbers of people coming into their city to attend that conference, and the request is essentially been put to us, or suggestion has been put to us as to whether council would be prepared to host it. This matter will be considered at the next EPLGA board meeting in early June, so hence the reason for an indication from council tonight in whether you're supportive of hosting that. We understand that there would be limited budget or financial considerations in terms of supporting it, given that the conference is ostensibly funded through sponsorship, so if the councils comfortable with just a verbal update, I'd seek the second resolution, otherwise we'll need to get a special meeting of council to provide a report to that effect.
Deputy Mayor Boarder?
Yeah, I'm happy to support it. Did you just mention that the costs would be funded by sponsors of the event, and so the cost of the rate payers would be negligible slash zero, or?
That is correct councillor.
Okay, thank you, yep, I'm happy to support that.
Councillor Knox? We have a motion then, two-part motion of the CEO's Action Report, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. Item 14.1.2, the dry zone arrangements in Waiala. I would like to seek a mover to suspend standing orders, I think this is a fairly significant topic, and the opportunity for an exchange of comments based on the degree of report and the potential recommendations. Deputy Mayor Boarder?
Happy to move that.
Move that way, for up to... Always go too low, up to, I was going to say 30 minutes? Seconded councillor Simpson?
Correct.
Right, suspend standing orders for up to 30 minutes, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. We have a very detailed report, I will refer to the CEO.
Yes, thank you, mayor, so I believe that the report should be pretty self-explanatory, so I'll take the report as having been read, and in doing so, I'm happy to respond to any questions or provide clarification from any councillors in relation to either consultation that was undertaken or the recommendations put before council for consideration tonight. In saying that, can I say that the purpose of tonight's meeting is to seek endorsement or direction from the council as to whether you want to proceed with the installation of a citywide dry zone? If council resolves to that way this evening, a subsequent report will be provided confirming what action is required on the ground to implement that resolution, and what communication we will do around that decision. So tonight really is just to get an indication whether you wish to proceed down that path or not, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Boarder?
Yeah, I'm happy to proceed down that path and happy to move the motion when it's appropriate. I've actually prepared some words that I'd like to share with the elected group as well, with the now's the right time, but also just flagging, so 67 aligned but had caveats dis from the report that's on our desks, the most prevalent was citywide but for a trial period. I just wonder if it was put in force without a trial period, what's the mechanism to then revoke it if the council into the future wanted to do that? Is that a costly exercise, or is it something that we should perhaps consider and build in at this moment?
I think the CEO can give an explanation there.
Yeah, so through the mayor, so the Liquor Licensing Act does provide for the minister to make a decision to either revoke or vary a dry zone that is put in place, so that can be done, it doesn't say it, but that can be done at any time, and in approving the establishment of a dry zone, that can either be done by the minister, either in an absolute or conditional basis. So council could, for example, request for a trial of the dry zone to be implemented. Having said that, the practical implications for council will be the same, so to actually give effect to the dry zone, council will need to do various things, including establishing signs on the perimeters of the city, notifying anyone coming into the city that it's a citywide dry zone, we'd have to put information up on our website, remove the signs that are currently around the existing dry zone, engage with stakeholders, et cetera, so we'll have to do all of the work, whether the dry zone is in place for 12 months or indefinitely, in indicating that, or in terms of one of council's consideration, you could ask for it to be a conditional approval, subject to review in 12 months' time, so you give the community a very clear statement of intent that you will review the dry zone in 12 months with a view to either varying or revoking the dry zone, noting however, we then need to reverse everything that we've done in the interim. So I think that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you, that goes a long way too, so if it wasn't subject to review, does that diminish our ability to review it at all into the future? It seems like a pretty simple process to remove it if we chose to in some point in the future.
Look, it wouldn't be, I want to just be clear that it wouldn't be just a simple process, that councillors decided that we've changed our mind and we want to revoke the dry zone, similar to when council puts the application to the minister for a citywide dry zone, we need to provide the rationale, details about the considerations we've had, the consultation we've done in order to seek approval. So in reverse, there would be an expectation, I'm sure, from the minister and the state government, that if we wanted to reverse that decision or vary that decision, that we would need to have information to support that request. So it's not simple in terms of we just ask for it and it happens, we do need to go through a process, but in establishing the dry zone, if the council was of the view that they wanted to essentially trial it, we could as part of our application ask for it to be conditional with that review, and just to be complete and ensure that there's no confusion. Once the council makes the decision and we get the dry zone in place, council could review the dry zone in six months, or if there was no condition, council could choose to review the dry zone in 12 months, two years, five years, it's completely at council's discretion as to when the review is undertaken unless you try to factor in that review clause in advance.
Any further, councillor Inglis?
Just a question, Justin, so if we said, right, we're going to have a 12-month trial, does that 12-month trial start from the time that we notify the minister, or to the time that the minister grants the trial start?
Through the mayor, the dry zone will only come into effect once it's gazetted, so there will be a time between, say, for example, from tonight, if council resolves to go down that path, getting the application to the minister, that needs to go through the state process in terms of the Commissioner for Liquor Licensing providing recommendations to the minister, minister then has to make a decision, and ultimately it has to be gazetted, so there will be some time before it actually comes into effect, which is at the time of the gazette will notice. And noting that putting in place the dry zone, if you say it's conditional for a 12-month period, it doesn't mean that automatically reverts back at the end of that 12-month period, it's just that it will be reviewed in that 12-month period.
Councillor Knox?
Couple of questions, the, is the problem of the same magnitude that it was, or has it quietened down a bit?
Through the mayor, we can only publicly comment on that antecdotally, in that we haven't got any data that we can lean back on, but certainly the observations in terms of the number of emails, phone calls, complaints, issues being raised with the council, in particular with the mayor and myself, have declined significantly over the last four to five weeks. It's important to note that in that period of time, we did have Operation Westlands, which was a significant safe hole intervention, which would have no doubt had some impact in terms of community perception regarding public safety, and also at the same time, or during that period, we've also had the Commissioner for Liquor Licensing through the Liquor Record introduce further liquor sale restrictions for cast wine and fortified wine. So a collection of all of those matters certainly has, from my perception, given rise to a significant decline in the level of concern and angst within the community. At the last Wireless Services Leadership Group meeting, equally there wasn't a lot of commentary from within the various groups about the concern that existed, certainly six months, sorry, six weeks or so ago before we started this process. Did you want to add anything further, mayor, in terms of your observation?
I think from what I do get told as well, now that we're heading towards winter and the weather's a bit colder, that's another factor that could be coming into play as to why it seems to be quieter, although I still get the feedback, councillor Pond may have some more there, that we still have the issue of the congleration outside the current zone. But yes, it has, it would perceive to have quietened down, but...
The other question that I had, has the issue been evident at all at the foreshore and the Adirond Gardens?
Certainly, I certainly have, I certainly have no knowledge.
I've only heard one brief parting reference to a small group attempting to consume alcohol on that side of town, but it was a once-off and it was a parting comment, so I certainly haven't received personally any advice or intel that it's been a problem on that side of town. Through the Consumer and Business Services that can monitor liquor sales across the city and across the state, in discussions with them, they have indicated that there's been a shift in terms of liquor sales from one side of town or from one liquor outlet to another, and what they have indicated is that with the current restrictions that are in place, noting that they're temporary restrictions that only go through at this point in time until early July, that what they've seen is an overall reduction in cars, sorry, in alcohol sales across the board, not just in particular venues or a particular venue.
I'm in favour of the dry zone, we'd have to do something, and the people have spoken, I guess, but I wouldn't mind seeing if we could exempt the foreshore and the Adirond Gardens, at least for a trial period.
Thanks councillor, I was going to say councillor Pond?
I'd like to acknowledge first of all the amount of residents that have come forward to actually have their say, I think this is probably the biggest numbers I've seen ever in public consultation, so that's amazing. We have a lot of residents that are definitely concerned about safety, but we also have a significant number that are thinking that we are taking away their rights, so I think that does need to be acknowledged. My stance the whole way through this has been, this is not going to fix the whole issue of our antisocial behaviour, how likely are we to be able to get more safe hole resources here? Because I think that is the key, as you just mentioned, when we had Operation Westlands, things very much calmed down. If we don't have those safe hole resources to implement a dry zone, it is never going to work, we're setting ourselves up to fail and to look quite silly. So yeah, what is the likelihood of us getting those extra resources to be able to implement this programme?
Thank you councillor Pond, I will go to councillor Todd, but listening to you, this is such a big issue, there is nothing to stop us changing, even if we wanted to defer this for more information and to address a lot of those issues that you're raising. Councillor, sorry, I'll go to the CEO first.
I may just respond to that question before we move on, so short answer is we don't know. One of the recommendations is to write to the Police Commissioner formally requesting additional police resources to be deployed to Waiala to assist with both the monitoring and enforcement of the dry zone, but also to assist with attending with other antisocial behaviour across our city, and also specifically seeking for the Assistant Police Commissioner to be invited to a future council meeting to discuss this request, noting that the Assistant Commissioner came and met with the mayor and myself off the back of a meeting that a number of councils attended online when they visited Port Augusta Council, also looking at some of these issues. So the report acknowledges exactly what you said, that increasing the dry zone without having the resources to monitor and enforce it is not going to be effective. To your specific question, will safe holes support that request? Only time will tell, noting, I'm going back to my opening introduction, that tonight was to get an indication of which direction you want to go. Obviously, seeking police resources will be potentially something that council might want to consider, whether we go down the path of a citywide dry zone, or even if we retain the existing arrangements and seek to get some supplementary resources on the ground here to assist. And just stating the obvious, it's not in the report that councillors have been briefed previously by Safehole, they obviously allocate their local resources depending on needs and criticality, and unfortunately, dealing with antisocial behaviour... And um uh unfortunately, um dealing with um antisocial behaviour to do with the um uh dry zone tends to get um um overshadowed by other more significant matters that our local police are attending to. In saying that, um my experience and all the contact I've had with the local sa- safe hole resources, they do a fantastic job, so that's not a reflection on the quality of the police resources that uh in our city. But I think it does talk to the question, do we need some additional resources?
Councillor Todd?
Um just some comments. Uh one is that I would like to make sure that if we do go down the line for a um dry zone, we don't back ourselves into a corner where we don't have an option to revoke it if we feel it's not working. My overwhelming feeling from the comments that I've had from the people that I've spoken to when I've been out and about as a councillor, but also in general in the community is that as a lot of people have opted for the dry zone, not because they want it, because they feel that's that that's their only option, given the safety issues that they're being faced up with at Westlands and the lack of other responses to the other things that have been happening. Um even as far as the, you know, the aggressive behaviour in the Westland Shopping Centre and that sort of thing. Uh I completely agree that we need to look at additional police res- resources, because I think that in the community at the moment, we have a high need for that. And um again, uh backing what um councillor Pond said, I think it's great that we've had such a positive response or such a response to a survey where a lot of people could have just uh ignored it, did, done what they no- normally do, stick their hand and head in the sand and then blame us for everything that happens. Um I th- I think we're overlooking the fact that there are some issues in the town area. Um as a trader in the city plaza, I often hear um uh drunken and abusive behaviour in the main street. So I'm not a hundred percent sure that uh not policing the foreshore and the Adirond Gardens is in our best interests. Because there is an issue down that end of town as well, maybe not as visible, because you don't get as many people in town, but it's absolutely there. Um and yeah, I think it's also really important that we continue to a- address the ongoing issues with um the violent behaviour, the mental health problems, the lack of housing, all those other things that the community faces. And it seems to get um hit in the face with at places like Westlands and hotels and that sort of thing. So just comments really.
Appreciate those. Thank you councillor. Councillor Simpson?
I'd just like to agree with most of the comments made tonight, uh particularly the fact that it's as an emotive issue, we've had such a great response. Your survey's the best we've ever had, um which is pretty staggering a bit, because we've been around a while. There's usually fifteen people, not two thousand. But I think majority have spoken. I think it's we need the police to be to be with us. I think majority are looking for us to do the right thing.
Any further comments? Uh deputy mayor border?
Yes, and just acknowledging what everyone has mentioned previously, I wanted to add one more point to the police resourcing is that it seems to me to be a bit like a chicken and egg scenario and that we need to look at what is within our control. And I think while proceeding down this path, we put the ball in a team match, doubles say, um into the, into Safehold's court to then, to then back us. But there's only one lever we can pull in this case, and that's to to push the button on the dry zone. Um also adding a bit of weight to what um councillor Pond, uh Tammy, um that's councillor Tammy Pond right there, and that's councillor Sharon Todd right there. Um what councillor Todd had mentioned in the main street, that I've had a a couple of property owners talk about it as well, that it's certainly affecting more than just one area of town. And the other point that I wanted to make was that in putting a dry zone in place for the whole city, it sends a message to those people outside of our city that are currently seeing it as a soft target to access and consume alcohol in public places. And I think that's a real key point that we need to keep front and centre as well. So on that note, on that note, happy to move it forward.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Right, if there's no further the comments, I'm in your hands as to, do you wish to progress with those recommendations? Deputy mayor border?
Uh yes, yep, I'm happy to.
You're.
I'm comfortable with the information that we've got.
To move though.
Very comprehensive.
Councillor Knox?
I'm happy to second it, but I've got one further question. And it might sound silly, but it does go on. If you're a caravaner or a motorhomeer, when you stay somewhere, around about four o'clock, they have happy hour. They usually all get together in a group and have a couple of glasses of wine or a beer in a caravan park setting. How would that be affected? Just say, for example, we're in a football club.
I think it'd be the same. Yeah, I think it'd be the same as the side of the game where football game.
Through, through the mayor, um if the venue um sold alcohol and they happen to be consuming alcohol at the venue, I don't know whether um repena.
They wouldn't be, they wouldn't be buying at the venue. They usually ha- they usually have.
I know, I know, I know that. What I was, what I was trying to get to is if there was a venue that sold alcohol and they're consuming alcohol at the venue, then that's not included. If they were, sorry, um Jodie, can you?
Yep.
So many licensed venues um actually have an arrangement, what's licensed on their property. So I'll use Central Y um Football Club as an example. Their building is licensed for alcohol and they've had recently in the last few years had it extended to an outdoor dining area. The rest of their facility is not, so you cannot consume alcohol in the car park um on the ovals, those sorts of things. So I would imagine that if you are um pulling up and having alcohol and it is a licensed venue and you are in their their premises, I think it would fall into the um consuming alcohol in an area that is um to be free of alcohol.
Hmm. Could be the problem, but anyway, I'm happy to move it.
Thank you councillor. That was a good point. I hadn't thought of that part. In that case, we do have a recommendation. We have a mover and a seconder. I do thank you for all your discussions. It is a very meaty issue. I will put the motion, those in favour. I was just gonna do that councillor. We'll go back into business. Somebody care to move that we go back into standing orders? Uh move deputy mayor border, seconded councillor Inglis. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against carried. So we now have that recommendation, those in favour. Against? Carried. Thank you for your deliberations. Carried unanimously. Item fourteen point two, corporate services ordinary reports, fourteen point two point one, the monthly budget report for eighteen twenty twenty five. In the first instance, if anybody has any questions or comments, I will refer to the CEO. If not, I'll take the report as read. Would somebody care to move the recommendation? Move deputy mayor border?
Uh in moving, can I make one comment?
Certainly.
Just to highlight, it says it in the report, uh but it's one of the biggest projects, if not one of, if not the biggest project this council's ever undertaken. It's under budget and ahead of time, and I think that's worth noting.
Thank you, deputy mayor, certainly. Uh seconded councillor Todd? They have a movement, a second, I'll put the uh motion, those in favour. Against carried. Thank you. Fourteen point two point two, the what, pardon me, the Waila Airport Runway Upgrade Project. Again, in the first instance, if anybody has any questions or comments, I'll refer to the CEO. Councillor Simpson?
Just a comment. Like, this is the part where I read we had a few incidences in the process of working. I'd be concerned about the, all minor ones, but there's quite a number of them. For professional contractors, I thought it was a bit rude.
I might just get um A- Anthony Bray, our project manager, to come forward. And um I think we also had some, a couple of extra photos and videos, um just to give you a, an update. The project's moving that quick that um by the time we did the report, it's already out of date. So I'll just get Michelle just to share a couple of quick photos and videos that were taken over the last couple of days.
We would have, thank you, would have shown that the correct layer on the, the, sorry, the wear layer on the runway was about halfway up the runway. So we've progressed sort of ten days on from when I wrote that report, so the runway itself had the wear layer finished last Thursday night. And we've now completed taxiway A from a wear layer pointers as well. The apron out front of the terminal has had about five thousand tonne of material put in the subbase. And it's had a preparation coat of pitchment over it uh last night. It's that will be finished being paved by the end of this week, which will complete the asphalt works on the, on the whole of the airport, approximately two, two and a half weeks ahead of schedule. The secondary runway, we've taken the opportunity to do some work on that, to bring that up to um a much better condition than what it was as well. On on the left, sort of the light grey is what it was looking like before. Now it's beautiful black with uh new lime work on there. It looks, it looks magnificent. It's a, it's a really good product on the secondary runway as well now, so that was a good opportunity to be able to do that. And last but not least, uh because we're getting out of date photos, this photo is probably about a week old now, but shows the secondary runway running across the bottom of the photo, um having had a coat of jet black across it. The main runway in that photo is about two thirds of the way down with the wear layer um installed. The light grey bit in the middle is where they profiled the first layer before they laid the second layer over it, so it keys in and and joins together. But uh a great shot from one of our general aviators of how the place is looking. And last but not least, there's a video that Josh Pickett from our comments team put together, just showing what sort of happens out on a, on a night shift. Actually moves a little bit faster than that. Unfortunately, our sound, the sound's not working tonight either, but there's some great footage of just what goes on out there on a night shift with uh a hundred and something people, about thirty or forty places. Yep, so sometime this week, uh Fulton Hogan have also volunteered to do a community project for us while they're here with they've got all the asphalt in here, so as soon as we've finished doing the apron, um the next night shift plans to asphalt the car park at City Park as part of the upgrade project that we're doing there. So that's a, a really good outcome. From councillor's point of view, and really generous of Fulton Hogan to uh basically mobilise the whole crew to, to do that work on a night shift, so really good outcome.
Sort of, what's the, what's the cost of that? When we were to get that from the stand and start, of course, you're heading for, of course, what?
It's probably significant. Well, it's, it's a lot of money by the time you mobilise here in, here out, it's, it's very money and so. Thirty or forty guys on night shift, it's, it's probably not a hundred thousand dollars, but it's a significant value.
Councillor Knox?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to commend everybody that's been involved with it. Fantastic job, great results. The secondary runway, is is that the same length as the main runway or shorter?
I think it's slightly shorter, yeah.
Slightly shorter?
Yeah.
And I would assume it's got a lesser pavement rating?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
I'll ju- just go back to councillor Simpson's point about safety. Uh there has been a number of um smaller incidences and a, a couple of notifiable incidents to safe work SA during, during the project. Um it's concerns that we've shared as well and had significant discussions with Fulton Hogan as, as we've been working through the project to a, a point uh about ten days ago, we had another discussion with them and got them to make some changes to the way they've been operating. They moved their safety manager from night shift onto day shift, because day shift needed a significantly better focus of what was going on. They'd mobilised some other extra supervision resources to site as well to, to just try and lift their game, because there's we're starting to see a cou- couple of issues and uh very hard to link them all together, but um it was certainly a concern that we shared.
And taking on yourself, there's quite a few minor ones, and if, if they are not looked at, it could become a major.
Correct. That was, that's, that was our concern too.
Well, thank you all. If there's no further questions or comments, and we thank Anthony for those uh updates. Would somebody care to move the recommendation, please? Move councillor border, seconded councillor Inglis. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against carried. Thank you. Item fourteen point two point three, the draft representation review report. Initially, I will direct any questions or comments through to the CEO. Does anybody have any question or comment? Very detailed report. If not, we have the choice of recommendations there. Either one, consider the need for a further workshop with Kelly D Jones regarding the draft representation review report, but if there are no questions or comments, we're looking at two, three and four. Councillor Pond?
I'm happy to go with two, three and four. As you said, it was um a very comprehensive report. Um I think it captured all of our feedback very well. I don't think there's any need for a further workshop.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Knox?
I'm happy to move. If councillor Pond hasn't already, can we go for the second option?
All right, sec- Yes. Councillor Pond moved with a question. Uh councillor Knox seconded. I'll put the motion, those in favour, against carried. Item fourteen point three, city growth ordinary reports, that is nil. Item fourteen point four, city infrastructure ordinary reports, fourteen point four point one, Point Lowly and Waila Marina's renewal project, the demolition of the Lowly Dock. Again, if there's any questions or comments in the first instance, I will refer to the CEO. Councillor Simpson?
Question, are we able to look at contacting Clean Seas about getting some money off of them, because they caused some of this damage, or some of the need for us to do, do the work?
Through the mayor, we've asked the question before on a couple of occasions, and the response that we've received from them is with a verbal request, um has been that they uh don't believe that they need to contribute anything at this point in time. Um there's no council resolutions that affect, so if council wishes to do, to direct me in terms of what you would like done, I'm happy to take um direction.
Deputy mayor border?
Yeah, I'd, I'd actually like to move, move that, that we do ask the question. I reckon there's information out there that could connect their usage of that marina to their damage that they've done.
I don't think it's so much the marina. This is the removal of the old dock. It's just the tyre, it's not the marina itself, it's the fishing, swimming parts of the dock that's, that's run away.
Maybe just um defer to manager of asset and planning, just to confirm that's the um boat ramp and marina is not covered specifically in relation to this recommend, uh recommendation tonight?
No, the recommendation tonight's related directly to the demolition of the dock. And the dock was originally put forward in the last council report due to the condition of the pylons underneath and the amount of rust and that, and the life being um close to end of life, which was where we got the recommendation to uh remove the dock. We did consider rebuilding and, but the costs around that, back at that point in time were cost prohibitive. Yeah, so the risk to cancel is that we have a dock sitting on rusted pylons uh with a limited life.
Thank you for that. Councillor Knox?
The actual dock had nothing at all to do with Clean Seas.
Yeah.
It was built for the local people that are, are running the chi- the um kingfish operations themselves. And that was their initial model for how, how they were gonna work their processes.
Yeah.
And that's why that big tube is there, that concrete pipe, they were gonna put a crane in there as well.
Yeah.
But as they developed, there, as they got further into it, and they sort of get, started going and using the ramp, so, and didn't use the jetty, but Clean Seas had nothing at all to do with it.
Yeah, councillor Knox is quite correct there, so I can support that.
Yeah, I, I remember that too. Uh we're doing it with a ramp or not?
Yeah, I, I remember that too. Are we doing it with a ramp or not?
Not this bit.
Not as part of this project, but, um, having said that, um, the asset team are well aware that the dilatation of the ramp is due for, yeah.
If we look at the ramp in the future, I think we should be considering Clean Seas as a lock drop.
Thank you councillor. If there's no further questions or comments, we do have a recommendation there, would somebody care to move councillor Pond?
Moving.
Moving, seconded councillor Todd?
Yeah.
I'll put the, uh, motion, those in favour, against carried, thank you. Item fourteen point four point two, the Tandere Village Future Asset Management Proposal. Have a detailed report there, I'll take it as read. And again, in the first instance, if anybody has any questions or comments, I'll refer to the CEO. Councillor Pond?
I just have a, a quick comment. I have a massive question mark whether this is going to be, um, affordable for them. Um, and first of all, I'd just like to say, CEO, you did an amazing job at the, um, public consultation. But I do have a massive question mark whether the very limited member base that they have is going to be able to afford such a, a big rise. They are a massive asset to our community, for the wellbeing of our community and tourism, I think is the cherry on their cake. I think their biggest asset is actually to our community. Um, but yeah, I just think we do need to take that into consideration.
Councillor Simpson?
Question to the CEO, did you have any feedback from Tandere since that meeting? Just because it went so well and just whether they got back to you after their meeting, they would have had a meeting obviously following that meeting.
So, um, we've, um, let the group know that this item was coming to tonight's council meeting, um, and that off the back of tonight's meeting, that I will share, um, my, the notes that I spoke to, uh, when we met with the group recently, which is a commitment I made on that night. Um, and also a draft lease to commence the discussion or negotiation around the, the, um, the terms. I don't believe they've actually met formally yet because they're waiting for, uh, the information to be provided by myself to the group. However, as I said, uh, uh, to the group, um, I needed essentially to get the, uh, tonight's resolution from council to confirm that you're, um, comfortable with us proceeding down this path, uh, because it was no good me going and potentially starting to negotiate something that was not consistent with what the councillor's intent is, so that's the purpose of, um, this recommendation. Uh, recommendation one does say that it endorses, um, entering into negotiations. Um, once we do get into those negotiations, if the group make a substantive claim that they are not able to, um, make the payment, that would obviously be something that I'd need to bring back to council, uh, because it would be outside the parameters as per this report. Um, initial indications during the discussion was that they sort of probably accepted the need to contribute more. It's a question ultimately of, you know, what's a fair and reasonable figure, um, which we won't know until we start the conversation with them.
Councillor Border, uh, Deputy Mayor Border, sorry.
Okay, on the basis that it's entering into negotiations, I'm happy to move it.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, uh, councillor Todd?
Um, I was gonna move it, but I'll second it instead, that's fine. And, and just to comment, same thing, as long as it's, uh, on the basis that we're moving into negotiations and, you know, I, I get, uh, councillor Pond and I had a conversation about it earlier on today. And I get that there are only eighty members and some of them are just the husbands who've been told to join and don't actually do anything. So, so then that raises the question for me of how huge is it as a community asset? I get that it's a great community asset, but it's not eighty people we're supporting, it's forty at a huge cost. So.
Thank you councillor. Any further questions or comments? Otherwise, we have a mover and a seconder for the multitask recommendation. I'll put the, uh, motion, those in favour. Against, carry, thank you. Item fifteen, fifteen point one, council members, fifteen point one point one, uh, the mayor's list of engagements which you have there. Happy to try to elaborate if I can. Councillor Knox?
This is one that I've raised before, the wireless services leadership group. Why can't the minutes come to council so they can know what's going on in that area? I raised it before. Couple of times.
I'll refer to the CEO, I'm not sure whether that's within our control.
Uh, yes, through the mayor. Um, the response we've provided in the past is that, uh, we didn't want to potentially, um, inhibit the conversation that occurs within that group, um, if by sharing the minutes, but to be frank, minutes actually don't show much information. Um, it really just summarises the subject matters that we have been discussing, so um, I'm happy to take on board and speak with the, at the Sappol, who currently provides the exec, executive support and circulate minutes. Um, uh, to confirm that they've got no reservation about us sharing the minutes with, um, with councillors.
Yeah.
Having said that, um, both the mayor and myself, um, had one of our workshops. If, um, the requests come in, could certainly talk to the group about all of the matters that are discussed, but um, I'll take on board the request for the minutes and, uh, see whether we can, um, organise that.
Uh, thank you for the question councillor. No further questions, there's a recommendation, would somebody care to, uh, move that recommendation? Councillor Simpson? Uh, seconded Deputy Mayor Border, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. Fifteen point two, uh, corporate services, city growth, fifteen point two point one, very detailed monthly information report for May twenty twenty five. If anybody has any questions or comments, I will refer to the CEO. Councillor Knox?
Um, in the report, it talks about new staff and it talks about work health and safety risk advisor. Is this an additional position or to replace the existing person?
Um, thank you, it's an existing position.
So, yeah.
It's an existing position.
Okay, so, so we can have two, two people doing that role now.
Um, so we've got a work health and safety business partner, which is a, an existing position. And then we've got a work health and safety and risk advisor, which was an existing position that had been vacant for some time.
Okay, and there's also two project managers. I'm just wondering which projects they're actually managing? And are they additional appointments and are they ongoing or just project based?
Do you want?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so what happened with that, the, it is, one position was split into two at lower levels. So the, um, the cost of the organisation was quite minor and managed through our cap, our project listing. And one of those project, uh, positions was made, um, contract based. Uh, so one was ongoing, which was the existing position, and then the other one was made contract based, based on our current project workload. Um, and basically.
Twelve month contract.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Pond?
Just like to say, as usual, all of this information is very well received, um, but I found the airport stats very interesting in particular. And we get lots of, um, comments from the community about cancelled flights. But when you look at it, it's only one or two here or there, so maybe from those one or two flights, there's lots of comments. But when you look at it, um, from a data point of view, it's actually not that many at all. So to have those graphs and have that information, so then we can pass that on to community when we're asked, absolutely fantastic. Thank you very much and I'm happy to move.
Thank you councillor. Yeah, I do think that some of those cancellations just happen to be very bad timing as to who was on board and some VIPs that were up at the time, that then had trouble getting back to Adelaide. But we have a motion, would somebody care to second that? Councillor Westerman, I'll put the motion, those in favour, against, carry, thank you. Uh, item sixteen, notices of motion, we have none. Item seventeen, questions on notice, we have none. Item eighteen, questions without notice, do we have any questions without notice? Councillor English?
I just want to raise about the Cuttlefish Drive Road from the Cuttlefish Dive Site around to Falls Bay. With the Cuttlefish season about to start, that road needs to be shut because it is just about near impossible in sections. So with the Cuttlefish season coming, there needs to be some really serious looks at that road. I drove it the other day. Um, it's dangerous in parts and near impossible in parts. And, you know, we're going to have a lot of visitors here shortly. And it is actually a really good drive around through there, but, uh, there's a couple of parts there that's that one, and the other one is the, that we talked about, the mountain there from the old escape route from Santos. There's a section of that in the middle that is impossible to all but very big forward drives, and even then it's a stretch. So there's, we just need to go and have a look about who's responsible, and especially with Cuttlefish season starting.
Thank you councillor. Can we take that on notice and have a look? Thank you. Councillor Pond?
The other night, um, at a networking event that was here in Wyla, there was something mentioned about the Wyla Business Directory not being accessible through the visitors' centre. Just wondering if, um, so apparently the lady went in and she was told that she could not advertise the Wyla Business Directory here in Wyla, but she has been given permission to advertise it in Port Augusta. Just wondering if we could get somebody to look into that and just, um, find out the reasoning behind it and if we could very much reconsider. Uh, I think it's a fantastic opportunity for all of our local businesses to be advertised. It's only a QR code. It's not a big booklet. Uh, anyone coming to the town could then have a snapshot of all businesses available. Um, and yeah, we'll just help promote our local businesses, because that's what I'm doing at the moment. Buy local whenever possible to keep everyone above in their businesses. Um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Can we also take that one on board?
Yeah, I consider it. Take it on notice.
Or take it on notice.
There's a difference.
Thank you, thank you CEO, right. Any further questions without notice? Thank you for those. Item nineteen, motions without notice, do we have any motions without notice? No motions, thank you. Item twenty, ah, right. We are now about to go into confidential sections. That basically is all we have other than confidential. I guess that means I do need to call on someone to move that we go into confidence. Move councillor English, seconded councillor Weston, and I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carry, thank you.